Puffering of the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Livonia Falcon Flag Football Team. Falcons, will you please come up here and stand in front of us and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Stop right there. Stop. Okay? Make sure you speak nice and loud.
Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to the meeting, as I said. Tonight, we have a special recognition of the Livonia Falcons Flag Football Team. I have a commendation that I'm going to read off here for the team. It says that this certificate is presented to the Livonia Falcons Flag Football Team, the 2022 city and divisional champions. On behalf of the City of Livonia, Michigan, please accept our sincerest congratulations to the Falcons Flag Football Team for their outstanding 2022 football season. And that's signed by all of us here on City Council. And not only are you the city and the divisional champs, we've got a big weekend coming up here, and you're doing what?
Super Bowl.
Super Bowl. So, our Falcon Flag Team here is going to be competing in the Super Bowl in Northville at Tom Holzer Field Sunday at 10:00 a.m. So, we wanted to send you guys off, and Lemon, guys and Lemon, off to be victorious and win the Super Bowl. So, would you all come up here along with your coaches in just a second? I just want to say, I have the pleasure of not only being on City Council, being the dad of one of our Falcons here, and it's been a great experience led by some great coaches and some great Livonia kids here throughout the season who have fought, and they've had a great time. We have great parents who contribute, and we're very appreciative of everything, and let's go win on Sunday, okay? All right. Come on up. We'll take a picture. Why don't you turn around and we'll see, face that way, we'll all come out and we'll stand behind you. And I'll give us a look at your coaches.
Coach Miller would like to.
All set? All right. There you go. All of a sudden, it becomes a lot quieter in here.
What?
Yeah. All right. So, welcome to the 1,956th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting, and minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be on Monday, November 14th of 2022. Ms. Nash, City Clerk, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Present.
Vice President Toy.
Here.
Councilmember Barr.
Here.
Councilmember Donovan.
Here.
President Jolly.
Present. We have six members with us tonight. Ms. McIntyre is feeling a little bit under the weather, and she decided to spare us from potentially feeling under the weather ourselves. So, we wish her the best at home. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the 1,955th regular meeting held on October 17th of 2022.
So, move.
Motion to approve by McCullough, supported by Mr. Barr. Does anybody have any comments or additions to the minutes? I see none. Anybody in the audience like to comment on the minutes? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The minutes are approved. At this time, we have set aside 30 minutes for audience communication so that members of the public can address us on any items that are not on the agenda for the evening. Is there any audience communication at this time? Going once, going twice? There is no audience communication. We'll move on to City Council announcements. But I promised Ms. Nash that I would go to her first as the City Clerk to give us an election update. Ms. Nash?
Thank you, President Jolly. Just a reminder that next Tuesday, November 8th, is Election Day, and the polls will be open at 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. The last day that we can mail out an absentee ballot is this Friday. However, I really recommend not waiting. And you can come on in here, and we can issue a ballot to you right here at City Hall. We will be here tomorrow and Friday from 8:30 till 5:00. Saturday, we'll be here for election purposes only from 7:30 a.m. till 3:30 p.m. And on Monday, from 8:30 till 4:00 p.m., we can issue absentee ballots and register people to vote here at those times, too. On Election Day, again, the polls will be open from 7:00 till 8:00, and we'll be here at City Hall. For anyone that needs to register to vote on Election Day, we can get you registered to vote here. And you can also get an absentee ballot here that day if you're registering to vote on Election Day, or you can take a receipt that we'll give you that you registered to vote that day, and you can go to the poll if time permits for you to get there. So, again, Tuesday is Election Day, and we are open. The polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Nash.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy.
Thank you. Mr. President, I have some sad news. We, many of us, served and, I felt like I served for her at times. Karen Siemula, Karen was our Legislative Director in this council office for many, many years. Many of you remember her fondly. She carried a big stick. She didn't show favoritism. She didn't gossip. She was just top of the line. She came to us from the City of Inglewood. She was very professional. She lost her battle with lung cancer just, I believe it was October 24th. She is survived by her husband, Ron, who was also very active in Livonia, as well as her son, Little Ronnie, as we referred to him as, and also her daughter, Amanda. And both young people played a lot of sports and just enjoyed life in the City of Livonia. After Karen retired, she moved out to the South Lion area, and her and Ron took residency there, but she still voted in Livonia. No, I'm only teasing. I don't know how she did it, but knowing Karen, she would have found a way. And Bonnie and her served us well for many, many years in the old council. And in a few short minutes, I'd like to ask our chairman to call a moment of silence for both Karen Siemula and another friend of Livonia, Don DeComo's wife, Carolyn, who was active in hospice, in the Italian-American Club, and just an all-around community leader, good, good family within our community as well. She just passed last night, and we just want to wish both families our deeper and sincere condolences and sympathy at this very, very difficult time. These two women were just pillars of our community, and I wanted to recognize them tonight, Mr. Chair. You know, some of you did not know them, but I'll tell you, they did some outstanding work for the City of Livonia. Thank you very much. May we have a few moments of silence.
Yes, ma'am.
Amen. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, I'd like to say Happy Halloween to everyone. I know Livonia had a big Halloween here in the community, and a lot of trick-or-treaties out there in my neighborhood, and a lot of activity in the City of Livonia. It was following on social media, and there's just so many kids out there trick-or-treating, being safe, and having fun with their families and friends. So, that was great to see the holiday spirit well and alive. Also, I'd like to say although our big crowd left, which was unfortunate, the Falcons, it was very cool to see them here today. I was an Oriole as a kid, playing over there on Bentley Field. I think Councilman Toy went there about 50, 60 years ago when he used to be in high school there. But I was playing football there, and grew up there playing football, and it was always a lot of fun to see the camaraderie amongst the different teams, the Blue Jays, the Falcons, Orioles, and whatnot. But it's really awesome, and thank you to my colleagues and Council President Jolly for having them here. What an awesome experience for those kids to be able to come to a City Council meeting and participate in the Pledge of Allegiance and supporting and loving their country while also going to their Super Bowl. So, go Falcons, go, good luck on Sunday. But my heart is always with the Orioles, so go Orioles. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else from the council? Any other announcements? At this time, as President, I will announce that we are celebrating a few birthdays in the next week or two, well, one in particular. Our Deputy Chief of Police, Ben McDermott, is celebrating his birthday on November 8th. I'll also note that on November 7th, we have a Committee of the Whole Meeting regarding Petition 2022-050101, that being the No Far Hotel Group petition. On November 16th, we will have a Public Safety and Health Committee meeting regarding the dear population in the City of Livonia. Mr. Donovan, you will be happy to know that the Falcon Flag Football Team is going to the Super Bowl, but the Oriole JV program is also going to the Super Bowl, and they will be playing at 2:00 o'clock on Sunday. So, if you want to go cheer on your team, you know, I'm sure they would be happy to have you, probably anyways. But we wish them the best of luck as well. We need to bring a couple of these Super Bowl titles back to Livonia, especially when we're facing Northville in both contests.
Only way we're going to get a Super Bowl in this town.
Yeah. On a side note, I'll give you a funny story here. My son, J.D., dressed up as Aiden Hutchinson, a Detroit Lion, for Halloween, and understanding that he was going with his Falcon team to the Super Bowl for L.J.A.L., he walked up to every single door saying that, "I'm going to the Super Bowl." And every single person was like, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, kid." Yeah, patting him on the head as he's wearing his Lions' uniform, so, okay. So, that concludes our announcements from the council. At this time, we will move on to our scheduled agenda for the evening. We have a relatively small agenda for the regular meeting. I'll note that we have a report from the Department of Finance dated October 5th of 2022 forwarding various financial statements of the City of Livonia for the month ending in August 31 of 2022. And we will now go to our consent agenda, Items 1 through 4. These items were previously studied on October 17th and found to require no additional study and will be voted on as one item at this time. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll move approval.
Support.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Mr. Barr. We have a second from Vice President Toy. Does anybody in the audience have anything to say in regards to the consent agenda, Items 1 through 4? I see no audience communication. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on the consent agenda?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to unfinished business. Item number five is a report out of the Capital Outlay and Infrastructure Committee meeting that was held on October 10th of 2022. Topics held at that meeting include the subject matter of city library improvements, the subject matter of Bell Creek's erosion issues, and the subject matter of road construction communications. Mr. McCullough is the Chair of that committee, and I will go to him to report on the happenings at that meeting.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, we held a Capital Outlay and Infrastructure Committee meeting on Monday, October 10th, a meeting convened at 7:05. It was attended. I am obviously the Chair. Councilmember Barr was the Vice Chair. He was also present, and Councilwoman McIntyre was present, along with Councilmember Morgan. City officials, the Mayor, Mr. Paul Burnier, Library Director, Tony Laporte, Jacob Rushlow, Assistant Director of Public Works, Mr. Zalinsik, City Engineer, and we had the Library Commission. The first items, we had two items. It was Council Resolution 122-18 and Council Resolution 253-22. Both are subject matter of city library improvements. The meeting started with a medium-sized, I would say, presentation by the Mayor, kind of detailing where the current state of our libraries are. We went over Noble Library and the condition that that's been in since 2018, 2019, and the direction that the administration does want to go. At the present, there is going to be an item coming before council for the demolition of the current facility. There's also a strategic initiative to look at libraries as a whole throughout the city and where to go for in this 2022, on, should we say. So, that's more to come. Out of that, there was some resolutions offered. One offer, and I would probably support a motion right now, for the approval of the Sandberg roof. This was an item that was put in.
Support.
Thank you.
We have a motion by McCullough, support by Toy.
This was an item that I went back to, forgive me, I have my paperwork, August 10th, 2022, for the replacement of the Carl Sandberg roof. This was put into committee so we could better understand the strategic direction of the libraries. With winter coming soon, even though the weather is good, a big kudos to Mr. Rushlow from our DPW for potentially securing the work to be done before winter really takes hold. So, we're glad to get this before us, and we're obviously have a vote right now.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough.
Would you like me to give more of the...
No, we'll stop and do the motions at this time.
Okay.
Is there anybody else on the council who would like to address the motion made by Mr. McCullough? Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know there was a lot of back and forth initially on whether we would move forward or not on the roof of this library. It is a rather large expenditure. I know there's been a lot of discussion about the future of what our libraries look like in this community. I think this building is worth the investment. Now, while I have different questions about our library service as a whole, that is a separate discussion. I think this specific item does warrant the investment in this building. I think this roof needs to be redone. DPW has gone through great lengths of their due diligence, and the library has done a good job as well. This building is currently a still good asset, and whether we fix it now or fix it in a few years from now, it doesn't matter, except for the fact that I believe it will cost us more money over the next few years if we continue to not invest in this roof. So, it is my opinion, and I'll be supporting it, that fix the roof now, and we can continue to have the good dynamic discussions about the future of our libraries look like. But this building needs an investment, and I think it's a worthwhile investment for the taxpayers of our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Anybody else on the council? I see none. We will go to audience communication. Good evening, sir. Can you tell me your name and address, please?
Thank you. Christopher Martin, and Livonia resident.
Thank you, sir.
I will tell you, concerning these libraries, we talked about this when I ran for City Council. This is about 12, 15 years ago, the condition of the libraries. And front page here, Livonia to demolish it, the one on Plymouth Road there. I'd like you all to go and look at the cement work that was done at Sandberg. They approached the building on the north side and on the west side. Horrible. Now, I believe it was city employees that did it, but it's just really, I watched an old woman with a walker getting assistance from somebody else, trying to get in the library. The finish on that is horrible. No expansion joints. They screeded it, didn't brush it. It's horrible. And if Todd was responsible for overseeing that, then I blame him. Don't waste money if the job's not going to be done right. But as far as the libraries go, I'd rather have one good one. We have four working computers at Sandberg. We have eight at the Civic Center. Farmington has 28. Think about that. We're maintaining, we were, three libraries mediocre. We have one good one. So, think about it.
Thank you, sir. Your name and address, please?
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Jeff Duteka. I'm actually a Farmington Hills resident, but I lived in Livonia for 17 years. And my folks who are present today are still Livonia residents. We grew up on the south side, Plymouth, or, sorry, Farmington and West Chicago area. And I was hoping to just make public record about some concerns about the Alfred Noble Library, if that's okay with council.
So, that's actually not on the agenda right now. We're speaking about the roof replacement at Sandberg.
Okay.
So, the comments have to be limited to that. We do have a relatively small agenda tonight. You can address us at the end of the meeting in regards to the Noble concerns.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Sorry for the interruption.
Oh, no, it's not, none at all. Okay. We have a motion to approve the roof replacement at the Sandberg Library. We have no further audience communication. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on that?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre, I'm sorry. Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The motion is approved, and I'll go back to Mr. McCullough to finish out his report.
Thank you, Council President. One of the items, just basically a subject matter of library improvements, we're going to have remain in committee. For that item, that does that. Moving on to Council Resolution 04-22, the subject matter of Bell Creek's erosion issues. Discussion was led by City Engineer Todd Zalinsik, who provided an update on three of the projects that are all part of the state funding that was received from Rep. Paul Hutskey earlier in the year. The Bell Creek project, the project scope has been created by O.H.M., and it's in process of being approved by the state. The Denmark Drain design is being completed to extend the sleeve for the drain more to come in the spring. The green mead retention pond is being designed just south of the soccer fields, more to come in the spring. This was a fairly quick item, and appreciate Mr. Zalinsik for being there and providing an update. The committee recommends that this item to remain in committee. Last, it was Council Resolution 262-16, the subject matter of road construction communication. This was an item that I had put in committee. We had some issues just with some communication over the last summer. I know Wayne County's been doing a lot of road projects, which, you know, I appreciate, obviously, sometimes the communication can be tough, and especially with residents and orange barrels everywhere, but the work is somewhat getting done, so we'll take that. This was just basically asking Mr. Zalinsik if there was any ways to do communication better as we receive it. It was reported from Mr. Zalinsik that he was going to be in a committee that would discuss projects in more detail that came out of kind of this construction season, and that was some good news on our front. The committee does recommend that the motion to remove this from committee, and I would look for support from my colleagues.
Support. Support from Donovan. Do we have any council comments on that motion? Mr. Barr?
Mr. President, I think to remove it from committee, wouldn't we just say no further action? I don't think we typically vote to remove something from committee.
No. I'm satisfied with that.
Thank you.
Okay. So, if there's no objection from the council, that item will be removed from committee. And that concludes item number five. We'll go on to item number six, which is a report out of the Economic Development Strategic Planning and Technology Committee meeting of October 19th of 2022. That is led by Mr. Donovan. The matters to be discussed at that meeting were the subject matter of exploring what economic tools are available and strategic moves that might be able to kickstart and spur redevelopment of Plymouth Road between Inglewood and Middlebelt Roads, as identified in the master plan as one of three focus zones, and also the subject matter of a master plan for Green Mead Historical Park. Mr. Donovan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wednesday, October 19th, as Council President said, we had our Economic Development Strategic Planning and Technology Committee meeting discussing two different items. All members of the committee were present, myself, Vice Chair Laura Toy, and Member Scott Barr, and we also had Kathy McIntyre and Scott Morgan present. Additional city officials was our City Treasurer, Linda Schiel, our Assistant City Attorney, Leo Neville, Mark Toramina from Planning Economic Development, Ted Davis, Superintendent Parks and Rec, Michelle Copan from Parks and Rec as well, and then Jacob Ughazi from Planning Department. We also had a long list of commissioners from the Preservation Commission, from Green Mead, from Parks and Recreation, from PRDA, Community Gardens, I mean, just a long list of really active individuals from different commissions. So, thank you all for your attendance. The meeting convened at 7:03 p.m. And again, this was talking about sort of revitalizing the Plymouth Road corridor, mainly between Inglewood and Middlebelt Roads, but in general, all along the area, and that is through the PRDA. The Chair of the PRDA, Omar Ferris, was present and shared some of his thoughts. Essentially, we talked about, was working with local developers, mixed-use development, kind of tying into the Livonia Vision 21 Plan, and how PRDA kind of works with that strategic ideas and goals and initiatives. We touched on the Noble Library as well, with that being on Plymouth and Farmington Road. Talked about the highest and best use for that property potential and what the city will be doing in the future, trying to tie that in with Sheldon Park. We talked about an asset plan that PRDA is working with along Plymouth Road. Currently, they're focusing on curb appeal, updating the fencing, and some of the masonry work. If you are ever driving up the road on some of the major corners, Middlebelt, Farmington, Merriman, and so on, there's nice metal fencing with nice brickwork. They're trying to update a lot of that. They're removing rusted trashcan equipment, so some of that metal has rusted over the years, so removing that and replacing it. So, some pretty good ideas coming out of that committee and trying to revitalize some of those areas and the vacant buildings, working with some of those local developers. While they're private property buildings, we can help and recommend and just try to work with those owners. This item will be staying in committee, and that motion was offered by Vice Chairwoman Laura Toy. Our next item was rather long. That was, again, the subject matter of a master plan for Green Mead Historical Park. A few councilmembers sit on that committee and have really been working hard on that over the last two years, and it's been really, really beautiful master plan coming out of it. Ted Davis, Parks and Rec, kind of led the discussion and talking about the last master plan that was written for this property was back in 1976. There was a lot of feedback from various groups offering ideas for that property. Then, the conversation went over to Arthur Mullen from Wade Trim. Wade Trim is the organization, the company kind of spearheading the ideas and the vision, the consultant on the project for the master plan. They went through various details of what they are proposing for the property, known their efforts for public engagement, and higher number of responses from the public and their ideas to see with that space. Representatives from Wade Trim presented their proposal, ideas for the area, and they're focused now on bringing the public to the park yet retaining the historical value of the property. Just briefly, some of the ideas that were proposed, it is a rather lengthy meeting and a lot of detail in the site plan, and that can be found online, but just some of the ideas was adding a larger parking area that's paved, adding a really nice, modern playground, adding some more accessibility in terms of driving and walkways for people that may have disabilities or vehicles, to try to minimize some of the mud and some of the other things you deal with at the park, and making sure that cars can kind of traverse through there, adding bike and walking trails through the woods and paths connecting Victor Parkway to Newburgh and connecting a lot of walkway paths from the actual park itself and through the woods, giving a very nice nature feel. And talking about the seasonal pavilion in the center of the park. Also, there was a building asset plan that the facility plan that they went over, and there's an actual rating system on the 20 buildings. They were all evaluated. There's five phases, and we kind of went through those five phases. We also went through the capital improvement plan, addressing that this potential plan in its current form would cost $17 million. Talked about how we could fund that and just some general ideas. Another representative briefly spoken about what is inside some of the buildings, different historical things that we have, and talking about maybe kind of having more of a system on what materials we keep that are more connected to the City of Livonia. Again, we talked about signage, better signage along Eight Mile Road, letting people know, hey, there is Green Mead Park here. and their ideas to see with that space. Representatives from Wade Trim presented their proposal, ideas for the area, and they're focused now on bringing the public to the park, yet retaining the historical value of the property. Just briefly, some of the ideas that were proposed, it is a rather lengthy meeting and a lot of detail in the site plan, and that can be found online, but just some of the ideas was adding a larger parking area that's paved, adding a really nice, modern playground, adding some more accessibility in terms of driving and walkways for people that may have disabilities or vehicles, to try and minimize some of the mud and some of the other things you deal with at the park, and making sure that cars can kind of traverse through there. Adding bike and walking trails through the woods and paths connecting Victor Parkway to Newburgh, and connecting a lot of walkway paths from the actual park itself and through the woods, giving a very nice nature feel. And talking about the seasonal pavilion in the center of the park. Also, there was a building asset plan that the facility plan that they went over, and there's an actual rating system, system on the 20 buildings. They were all evaluated. There's five phases, and we kind of went through those five phases. We also went through the capital improvement plan, addressing that this potential plan in its current form would cost $17 million. Talked about how we could fund that and just some general ideas. Another representative briefly spoken about what is inside the, some of the buildings, different historical things that we have, and talking about maybe kind of having more of a system on what materials we keep that are, that are more connected to the sale of Livonia. Again, we talked about signage, better signage along Eight Mile Road, letting people know, hey, there is Greenmead Park here. Some people don't even know it exists. And talking about the possibility for future events. Talked about partnerships and the funding, kind of the potential funding that comes from some partnerships, public and private partnerships. Talked about the gardens and, and some of the concerns with various groups. This item will stay in committee. I think that motion was also offered by Councilwoman Laura Toy, and we will kind of go from there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Ms. Toy?
Thank you. If I may, go back to A for one minute, and maybe you know this better than I, Rob. I had a call from a constituent, I think it was last night. Was last night Halloween? It was, yeah, anyhow. No, last night was November 1st. And they wondered, I think there's another light being put up. Does anyone know about that along Middle Belt there, which they were happy about because of the traffic, because of all the success we've had in that corridor with now Chick-fil-A going in and Amazon and a few other. Is that, I didn't get a chance to go down there today, so I wondered.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Since this ties in with the redevelopment of Plymouth Road, is that okay if I address it?
If it was covered in the meeting, yes.
Yeah.
Was it covered in the meeting specifically?
Not specifically the light itself, but just the revitalization of that corner specifically, though?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, yes, there is a light being added at the new Chick-fil-A development and the new shopping center development. I know that there was a lot of minutes kind of suggesting that there was going to be some sort of light with Wayne County and that new development right there. I don't have all the specifics about that, but I know that in the prior meeting to that new development project, that was discussed at a meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
They were happy about that. That's what I was going to convey. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCullough?
Thank you. I'd like to actually offer an approving on Item B, which is the subject matter to adopt the Greenmead Master Plan.
Support.
Ma'am?
We have a motion from McCullough, support by Donavick. Mr. McCullough, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, there's been a lot of work that has went into this. We had Wade Trim, we've had a steering committee. And after speaking with administration, you know, adopting a master plan doesn't mean that's the be-all and-all. There's obviously that things that could be tweaked down the line. I was unfortunately not able to make that meeting, but being part of the steering committee, I, you know, we, we had insight, obviously, throughout the project to, to see what pieces went where. And, you know, I'd like to point out a couple items, you know. This master plan did pass the Historical Preservation Committee, so that commission that has been approved. And it's, it's something that is just exciting. Greenmead, I've always said, is a gem of our community, and the way that this does, it kind of puts everything together. I mean, it's pretty awesome. And the, the excitement that a lot of people I've heard from, colleagues, neighbors, it, it's kind of fun to see the excitement for that corner. We did hear some dissent about the Community Gardens, and I, and I want to be transparent. Currently, there's 220 plots at the Community Gardens. This plan would cut that down to about 100. So, I know that that was a huge topic. A lot of residents have been reaching out, and I appreciate that. And again, going, just adopting this plan doesn't mean that little things can, can be moved, and this doesn't mean that the funding's going to be pushed forward. It's just adopting the master plan that's been worked on tirelessly. And so, this is a pretty exciting time for me to be up here and offering my support and a motion for the approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barr?
Thank you, Mr. President. Having served on that committee myself, I too am excited about the work that's been done. It's been a pleasure to be a part of it. However, I think it's premature for us to prove this tonight. We spent, I think, every bit of two hours at that meeting dissecting the details of this plan, and there was a, a lot of really good discussion, and frankly, some, some perspectives that were new to me that were presented by the, the residents that night. And one of the things that came out of that meeting was a request by one of the council members to, to put a feedback mechanism on the Greenmead website and specifically solicit feedback from the community on the master plan itself, and, and just allow a little bit, even though that there had been an opportunity to do that, there is now a QR code out there with a direct link to a survey to specifically get that feedback. And, and the thought had been to leave this in committee long enough for that to, for, for us to use our various communication channels to promote that and give residents an opportunity to do that. I think it's disingenuous of us, based on the discussion during that long meeting that night, to go ahead and approve. Let me make, let me make clear again, I, I like the plan. But I did hear some things that night that, that had me thinking about some, some things, some small things. I'm not talking about a wholesale change in the master plan. In general, I like the direction we're going. But to finish my thought earlier, I think it would be disingenuous of, of us, based on the discussion that evening, to approve this tonight, and I would ask that we just hold off on this for, you know, call it four weeks or so. It's not, there's, there's nothing, there's no action that's going to happen in the near future, the super near future, that this would delay. And I think we do, we're making good on our word to do that. I think the cleanest way to do that, I mean, I could offer a substitute, I guess, but I'm not sure. I, I guess I would ask if the maker of the motion would be willing to withdraw it, to hold it for four weeks, so we can make good on that, that intent.
Mr. McCullough?
Yeah, Councilmember Barr, great points. And, and again, I don't want to be trying to rush anything. That's why I was kind of tiptoeing and saying, you know, there's always tweaks and, and some stuff that we can do down the line. I don't think that once we adopt, will there be changes? For sure, of course there will. But in the matter of four weeks, I'd be happy to withdraw, so we can get a little bit more time. And again, everybody that's out there on our website, there is a QR code, you know, please fill that out. I know that there's been a lot of public interaction and comment that we've been wanting, and that's been happening over the last year, but please, if you haven't done so, do so. But yes, I would be happy to withdraw to, to get this behind committee again.
Mr. President, first of all, thanks to Councilwoman McCullough for being amenable to that, and I failed to mention one important detail. To find that, the easiest thing to tell you, and I just tried it, just Google Livonia Greenmead, and the first thing that pops up will take you to the page where that QR code is. So, it's on the city Livonia website. You can navigate your way there, but if you just Google Livonia Greenmead, you'll find it. I encourage all residents to take a look. It is an exciting plan. Even if you disagree with small pieces of it, or maybe large pieces of it, it's a pretty exciting plan, and, and we value your feedback. Thanks.
Ms. Toy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. McCullough and Mr. Donavick, for bringing up this very important plan. It's, it's so true. After serving on this council more than once, I can tell you, there's a lot of people that have struggled with Greenmead over the years, let alone moving all those wonderful little buildings over there and things like that. So, your points are well taken, and it was intriguing, everything they brought forward to us. It was really, you know, quite, quite good, the footprint of it. While I have some suggestions, so I'd like to certainly attend another meeting. And I think to Mr. Councilman Barr's point, we did, we did promise a feedback. So, I was kind of, you know, leaning that way with Scott, because there were some concerns of, you know, what kinds of things, perhaps on a larger scale, of people interjecting their comments. So, I'm glad to see that the council's taken another month just to review it. And this was the first time I've seen it. You know what I'm saying, as far as being at a meeting, having some discussion points, and I know we're going to tweak a few things, but I commend everyone that was involved with it, because it's a long time coming, and it, it is, as you've stated, a jewel in this community. I just caution us as we talk about a lot of volunteers that'll help on some of it, because I think Livonia's always been a great volunteer town, but right now with times the way they are, it's tough to even get employees, let alone volunteers. So, I would, I would caution us as we proceed, proceed with this, because that is real. You know, in owning a business, I see it day in and day out. The city has seen it, and we just, I think, have to be a little bit careful as we put things together, and I know we will. I just, that was one thing that came out of it, as well as some of the gardeners concerned. We were concerned about them as well, as I'm sure you guys were. But thank you for, you know, being amenable to Stalin a little bit.
I think it's just the Red Bull kind of caught up with me pretty fast.
It's the Red Bull caught up with it, yep.
Just got excited.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Donavick, your report has concluded, correct?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other comment from the council in regards to item number six? Any audience communication on item number six? I see none. We'll move on to our last agenda item for the evening. That's number seven, a request for additional appropriation and expenditure from the Engineering Division to close out the 2022 Asphalt Paving Program, Contract 22A, in the amount of $150,000, and the new total of $4,150,000, citing Council Resolution 154-22. Can I have a motion?
Support.
Motion by Toy to approve, second from Mr. McCullough. And we will go first to Mr. Zalinsik in regards to this matter.
Thank you, Council President, City Council Members. As you're aware, during the 22 program, we had to cut a few streets off to get the asphalt under budget with what happened back in February with the gas prices. Those streets were St. Francis, Maplewood, and Jarvis. Near the end of the program here in August, we had an opportunity to add a couple streets based on the funding that we utilized. And so, we added back in St. Francis from Bridge to Pembroke, and a portion from Long to N, and then also Maplewood off of Seven Mile. Unfortunately, Jarvis, there's enough, not enough funding to do Jarvis. We'll do that at a later date. With that money, we were able to complete those streets. In addition, we did some repairs on the Van Road south of Schoolcraft in the southbound lane. And lastly, looking to do some relief on West Chicago between Inkster and Harrison, on some of the deteriorated areas of concrete, so we can do some asphalt patching to get us through until we can do the reconstruction 2024, which will receive federal funds. So, that, with that request, we're asking $150,000, of which will come from various sources that were listed there. And as you know, things do not get any cheaper as we move forward. So, we're, again, trying to facilitate the maximum amount of dollars we can utilize to do the best work we can in the city, as previously identified as part of the 2022 Road Program for Asphalt, and asking for your approval for the $150,000 to move the contract amount from $4,000,000 to $4,150,000 for Nagel paving. Thank you.
Any other comment from the council? None. Any audience communication on item number seven? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take a vote.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Item number seven is approved. That concludes our scheduled agenda for this evening. Does anybody on the council have any comments or announcements? I see none. We'll go back to audience communication. If you'd like to address the council on anything that was not on the agenda this evening, come on up to the podium. That is, unless you have already addressed us in the opening comments. Sir, you have three minutes. Please tell me your name and address.
Councilmembers, Jeff Dudka, Farmington Hills resident, former Livonia resident for 17 years. Grew up just off of West Chicago and Farmington. Spent a lot of time enjoying the, the parks and the libraries in Sheldon Park on the south side. Here today with my folks, who would also like to make a couple comments, and just to kind of go on record with some support for, for some potential alternative plans for that structure. When we had first heard about the library closing in 2019, it was, it was a pretty big disappointment, because I'm at the stage now where I have two young daughters, and we come over to Grandma and Grandpa's all the time, and Sheldon Park has always been a resource for us, whether we're going to ride our bikes, you know, potentially, you know, go to the pool, or do, you know, just other kind of field-related activities. We were really looking forward to giving them the full experience of the, of the Alfred Noble Library, whether it be for seasonal programming or other, you know, other activities that were sourced there. So, we kind of paid close attention to the, the reports on what the situation was, and it seemed that, you know, well, soon after COVID hit, and, you know, everything kind of got put on hold across the board, understandably. And then, we had been in communication with various departments within the city, been in contact with the mayor's office, and were told that we were, there was just a, a, a period of time that needed to, 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 that folks needed to wait to figure out what the, the full extent of the damage was and what the cost would be to, you know, to potentially bring that building back from the situation that it's currently in. And then, as most folks probably saw, about a month ago, there was an article in Hometown Life indicating that the mayor's plan was to suggest to City Council that the Alfred Noble Library be demolished and then replaced in the future with some other city resource. So, what, what my hope today was, coming here and dragging my folks to their first city council meeting, was to go on record as saying that there are a lot of folks in the community that believe that that building is, that the, the structure, the architecture of that building is a jewel for the south side of Livonia. There are, Livonia has a very rich history of working with mid-century modern architects, as I'm sure you're all very aware. And those are, those are things that we need to protect. Those are things that folks in the community recognize as assets. And I think, you know, if you want an example of, of how that can really bring a neighborhood back, you can look at the, the depot, the train depot in Detroit. And granted, that's in, you know, private hands now, but that has, you know, that, that is going to be a gem for Corktown. That's raised property values in that, in that neighborhood of the city, and
Fifteen seconds.
will be enjoyed. I'm sorry, 60 seconds?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, thank you. So, just to, to finalize my comments, I wanted to mention that the architect that designed Alfred Noble is by the name of Gunner Burkerts, who's responsible for a wide variety of, of developments, including Domino's Farms, 1300 Lafayette downtown Detroit. And I think it would be a shame to demolish that building.
Thank you, sir. If we have anybody else who'd like to address the council, please come up. Good evening. Your name and address, please?
Good evening, Council. My name is Edward Dudka, Livonia resident since 1977. The young man that you just heard speak was one year old when we moved in, and Livonia's been a gift to us all of these years. Love it. Tend to stay here. Love our libraries too, which is the point. When he was young, now with his granddaughters, Emerson and Molly, the opportunity to go to Noble, where they had, over the years, since whenever, beautiful reading programs for the children, things that make a community, help solidify a community. It'd be sorely missed. What troubles me is, I don't want to get too down, but the Rodney Dangerfield effect of the people living on the south side of Livonia. I mean, we had a fire station, and it's just gone. It's still a city building, and it's still being used, and that's a good thing. There was a school on Stark, where I, many, many years ago, voted. That was sold, and it's a housing community. There was a house, a school on Cranston, which was demolished, and now it's a housing. Six, six new homes, very lovely. We lose property for the hopes of improving our tax base. I'm not sure. It's, it's out of my league, and I'm not going to even address that, only that when things are, when, when things are removed and not replaced, it's worrisome. When they say you're going to tear down our library, which is, let's be honest, a landmark in Livonia. It's a beautiful structure. To be addressed once it's gone, I mean, that's troublesome for me. Well, we'll talk about it. Once it's leveled, we'll, we'll discuss what we'll do with the property. If it became anything other than a viable city property, I would be upset if it became another extension of a strip mall or anything like that. This would be troublesome for me and many of the people, neighbors and people that have enjoyed Noble for all of these years. And please consider this, and thank you so much for the time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I, I can't recall. Did you address at the beginning of the meeting or no?
I did not.
Okay.
I was running a little late, Council President, so.
Then, then the floor is yours. Thank you, sir. Your name and address, please?
I'll dance fast. The
What's your, you got, tell me your name real quick.
That hasn't changed, and I still live in Livonia. Christopher Martin.
I gotta do it. All right, thank you, sir.
It's all right. I want to talk about the lunch program for seniors. I go to it. A friend of mine wanted to go, but he didn't want to go alone. So, I said, why not? The problem with it is that they don't have enough volunteers. So, you don't get a hot meal, like a cafeteria-style meal, that you would have if you can remember back when you went to high school, something like that. So, therefore, some days you have it, some days you don't, depending on the volunteers. Not enough volunteers. We've got all this COVID money. Last September, we gave all the city employees $1,000. Whether you want to call it a prize or a bonus, but, and you call them heroes, some people. They're not heroes in my book, okay? They're city employees. So, I'm going to ask for a little help here, okay? You can't rely on volunteers. You're going to have to pay somebody. You're going to have to pay somebody. So looking on the committees here, I see that we have a senior citizens committee. And Scott Morgan, I got faith in you. So I'd like you to work with Mr. Jolly and come up with an idea here, possibly, that we can divert some of this money and actually hire some people. You can't take somebody off the street, just volunteers over there who are sitting there waiting for lunch and say, do you want to serve some food? You don't know their background. You need gloves, a hairnet, a mask, and somebody to show up. That's what you need. Probably five, six people, something like that. And this has nothing to, this is the sit-down meal, this has nothing to do with the Meals on Wheels that they also take care of. Okay? So that's what I'd like to see happen. Now, if I got another minute, let me just talk about the library thing. I'm so damn old, I remember when our library was a storefront on Plymouth Road, west of Farmington. I've seen this happen before. I went to Rosehill, it's no longer there, went to Grant, it's no longer there. So, not Grant, excuse me, Whitman. I saw your eyes rolling in the back of your head there for a minute, Jim, yeah, Whitman. So the.
15 seconds.
Thank you. I'm familiar with it. It costs, it would cost more to repair that building than to take it down. And you, I could talk for an hour probably about the lack of maintenance on a variety of buildings in this city, not just the library system. We need one.
That's time.
Good library. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just note that we do have a Capitol Report being done by Plant Moran at the moment, who's investigating all of our buildings and assets, and will be putting forth an amount, which will probably be an extremely large amount, to do right by all of our assets and buildings.
Well, I know we got a lot of free COVID money, I don't know how much, but let's think about that.
Thank you. Do you have any other audience communication tonight? I see none.
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn.
Support.
We have a motion to adjourn, we have support, a motion to adjourn by Toy, rather, support from Mr. Donavick, I'm sorry. It's hard to see this with this glare.
I know, it's really pretty.
Do we have any other comments from the council? I think it's safe to show six. We will be adjourned. Our next meeting is scheduled to start at 8 o'clock. We're going to start it at 8:05, and I see in the back of the room there, at the beginning of the meeting, as part of my announcements, I indicated that we have a birthday on November 8th. I think the birthday boy just walked in. I don't know if he wants to, wants us to sing happy birthday next meeting, but we'll see. All right, thank you very much, we'll see you in a couple.